December 19th, 2019. To order at 6:00 PM and ask Clerk Simtski for roll call.
Mayor Gunther.
Here.
The clerks here, Trustee Addington.
Here.
Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Guzzo.
Here.
Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Would everybody please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everyone. Tonight's kind of a fun night with presentation of different recognition that we have in the community, but I am going to start on a sad note. Manager May is not here tonight because his mother passed this week and we want to wish, not wish, but convey our condolences to him and his family. First item I have then is the Home and Business Decorating winners. I need Christina and Larry to come on up to the podium to present the certificate.
Hello, thank you. So Westmont Special Events recently hosted Holidays Home Decorating Contest, so I want to thank you, everyone who participated and judges, and congratulate winners. Which, third place, we have Bill and Sherry Rudel. Do we have them in the room? Yes? Could I have them there?
Ready, here we go. One, two. We got to thank them. Thank you.
So, second place is Joe and Pam Wagners.
Is it all decorated with Eva?
Yes.
A lot of lights.
A lot of lights.
All right, ready, here we go. One, two, and we got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the first place is John and Rebecca Papas. They're nice.
They're shopping.
Yeah. Thank you, everyone.
On the business side of our community, we have three winners also. First, we'd like to invite up Vibrant Credit Union. Vibrant Credit Union is located at 23 West Quincy, so you'll get a chance to take a look at their decorations. Their theme was a Dr. Seuss Whoville theme. Sure, balance.
Ready, here we go. One, two. We got to thank them. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well done. Second place, Phillips Flowers at 528 North Cass with a Midnight Clear decoration theme. Phillips did such a great job.
Thank you.
Here we go. One, two. We got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And last but not least, and moving up from second place last year, is first place business
winner, West Suburban Family Vision and Therapy at 136 North Cass, and their theme is Icicle Lane Theme.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, and we wish everybody a happy holidays day. Thank you.
Before I proceed, is there anybody here for open forum, for talk to the board on anything that's not on the agenda, then I will close open forum. I'll go back to my report, walking to Shinshu results. I'll invite Mike Ramsey, Larry, and Jenny. Would you please come up to the podium and hand out our awards?
All right, well, first we'll invite our residents up. We had over 21 residents sign up for our Walking to Shinshu initiative.
That's awesome.
Our first ever. Lynette Ashby.
Thank you.
I did it, it was fun.
Lisa Blanchard.
Thank you.
Is Mary here? Shaga? Okay, you didn't make it? Okay. You need Madden? Any other residents here? Okay.
So, are residents in the middle there?
Yes.
Or a row?
Want to step forward just a little bit? We'll have everybody, all the residents.
There you go.
Yeah, we'll be in the back. We do have a few of our employees that also signed up for our initiative. We had 32 employees from the village sign up. Jim Case. Jenny Simpson. Trustee Steve Nero.
Thank you.
I only walked a dime's throw when I see you.
Larry McIntyre. Trustee Linda Little. Trustee Marie Guzzo.
Hey, Marie.
Too tired to walk.
Trustee Larry Baviar. Renee Brainerd. And Mayor Ron Gunther.
Always trying to get us in two rows if that's possible, so we have time, Linda, to come up front.
I'm sorry. Of course. I've never been in the second row. Right there. Thank you, everybody.
I'm more of a segue kind of a guy. I do have one more item. We're still looking for individuals' vision of Westmont for 100th anniversary. We've got one more mural to do, and the artist would like to have the community share with her what they view as the future of Westmont. So, it's no right or wrong to share with her. She's gonna, in the next 11 months, she's gonna prepare that mural, it'll be the final of five, and it'll be presented in November next year. The last thing I have is just to wish everybody a happy holidays, safe, enjoy the family, and then I will move on to Clerk Simtski.
Okay, I just have a couple of items. Remind everybody that the village offices will be closed December 24th and 25th and January 1st for the holidays. And the Citizen of the Year is coming up, so we would like to encourage everyone to nominate individuals who dedicate themselves to giving back. Nominate someone through the chamber, website, website. And, as you said, happy holidays to everybody. Get out and enjoy our beautiful town.
Thank you. When we move on to Trustee Nero.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items. Before this meeting, we had our regular Public Works Committee meeting, so just a quick recap. First and foremost, we honor a 30-year plaque presentation for an employee, Kirk Nix, excellent, dedicated employee, so again, just to congratulate him, great guy, and we want to thank him for his service. And then, next, we also, the mayor had the privilege to swear in Justin Yater, one of our Westmont High School operator and training program graduates, so another awesome thing. We also discussed the potential for dash cam cameras in Public Works. We're going to be looking into that, potentially seeing those come into fruition. Mike, our Public Works Director, Mike Ramsey, gave us an update on the Public Works facility. We are ahead of schedule, and hopefully barring any crazy weather here in the next few weeks, we should have the building completely enclosed by the end of January, so that's kind of exciting. Also, got an update on the new fueling center. We're waiting on ComEd for a few things, but I thought a pretty innovative thing that we're doing is reaching out to other agencies that do not have one to potentially partner with and help bear some of the costs, some other surrounding towns, townships, and things like that, so more to come on that side. We also talked about safe routes to schools and sidewalks, looking at a few gaps and areas that we need to focus on, as well as putting some more funding to our contractor that helps grind and smooth some of the paths out, so that is good. Of course, continued with our sewer jetting program, I forget the exact number, but quite a bit of sewer jetting that has been going on as well, consistent maintenance, we like to see that. John and his team, John Yater, planted 176 trees this fall season, which we like to see, and now you may see them out there pruning a bunch of trees and maintaining them, so thanks to John and his team for that. We talked a little bit about the lead water service line replacement ordinance, still kind of figuring out how that's going to work. Thankfully, we don't have too many issues here in town, we think, so not too much of the financial impact. We talked about my old neighborhood, 61st Street and Comner Stream Bank Stabilization Program. We're going to expect from Norial, budgeted project this coming year to kind of clean that up again and focus really on the culvert and the road and all kinds of stormwater stuff in that area. Also talked about our five streetlights we own and the need for us to upgrade all the controllers and equipment. It's all outdated, we can't get any parts, so expect that to come. And that's about all the major updates, Mr. Mayor. I do have one quick thing I don't want to leave out, is the census. So, quite a few of us here in the village are helping out on the Census Committee. Quick update, we are, we need folks to, there's a visual that's going to be popping up here, respond to the 2020 census. Just want to remind people that this provides funding for educational programs that benefit our children, like after-school activities, school meal programs, and Head Start. It's more than just a count, it's an opportunity to shape the generation. So I know quite a few of us are intimately involved in working on that to make sure we get the word out and working with other agencies and the business community and just about everybody we possibly can touch, because it is extremely important to make sure we get everybody counted. And that's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next Economic Development Meeting will be January 8th at 9:00 AM, right here at the Westmont Village Hall. I'd also like to touch on something that Trustee Nero just mentioned with the tree planting. 110 of those trees were planted along Pasquenelli, and we also have 17,000 daffodils that were planted at Oakmont and Pasquenelli. This is a key to our development, our economic development, is to have the infrastructure and also aesthetically pleasing areas, so this is a big, important part of it that John shared with us today in our economic development. We have our, an upcoming ribbon cutting to Rising Goddess Fitness and their new expanded location. They are staying in Westmont at 208 East Chicago Avenue. So everyone is invited to attend the ribbon cutting ceremony on Friday, January 17th at 11:00 AM to 11:30 AM. And if you could please RSVP to the westmontchamber.com prior to it. And again, that's Friday, January 17th, from 11:00 AM to 11:30, at 208 East Chicago Avenue. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, wishing everyone a happy holiday season.
Very good. Trustee Johanna Guzzo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next Public Safety Committee meeting is going to be February 27th, here 4:30. Everyone is invited to attend. Let's Help the Fire Department Keep the Wreath Red. Keep the Wreath Red program is an annual event aimed at increasing the awareness of safety while decorating our homes for the holidays. Outside both fire stations is a wreath with red lights. The wreaths remain lit 24 hours a day during the holiday season. If a fire occurs that is determined to be a result of a holiday decoration, a white bulb replaces a red bulb on the wreath. The hope is the wreath will serve as a constant reminder to practice safety while displaying holiday decorations. And I know that this program has been in place for years and years. When my father was the fire chief, I remember Keep the Wreath Red, so please, let's all do our part and keep the wreath red. And I also want to wish everyone a very happy holiday season and a happy 2020 as we start a new decade. Everybody be safe and enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Addington.
Yes, sir. First of all, condolences to Manager May and the loss of his mother. He was Steve for a long time, and I know he spent a lot of time with her, so. But the other thing is, and normally we would say happy holidays and leave it at that, but the weather prediction is such, I think they're talking 50 degrees, kids are out of school starting Friday, and if the weather's going to be this warm, they're going to be out on the sidewalks and in front of their houses and that playground. So as you're driving, please, please be careful of our children while they're off for the holiday season. With the weather being where it's at, they're going to be outside. And other than that, my committee, which is Community Development, is going to be meeting on January 16th, and that'll be at 4:30 here before that board meeting. And that's all I have, sir.
Well, thank you. I'll turn over here to Trustee Barker.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess it's a week of condolences. I also wanted to offer condolences to the Kramer family. Jean Kramer passed away last week, longtime resident, and been in town a long time, and she, you know, she has her son and grandchildren, and everybody's still in town. But condolences to that family. And then, Westmont First will meet again on January 16th, and I just want to thank everybody for stepping up and helping with the census, which you'll hear more and more about, you know, public service announcements and all the effort that goes into that. And there's people volunteering their time to make this work for us. It was pointed out by Jenny the other night that for everybody that isn't counted, that's And so we want to get, I think, the last census. It was one-third of the population here didn't get counted.
Wow.
So it's lost revenue, lost representation, lost services. Anyway, that's going well, and we're excited about that. The Environmental Improvement Committee will meet on January 6th at 6:00 PM in the library. No stopping those folks, they're a great group of people. Right now, we have holiday lights recycling that continues until January 31st at the Johannick Fire Station in the library. We also have holiday tree recycling that will go on after Christmas, and you have to take all the ornaments and things off your trees when you bring them in for the recycling. And then I'd like to call up Mr. John Yater, he's going to talk to us a little bit about Richmond Gardens.
Thank you, Trustee Barker. I have a few things to talk about, actually, and Richmond Gardens is definitely one of them. For those of you who have not kept up with the buzz, there's been a lot of goings-on at Richmond Gardens. We've got installation of our paver bricks. As you can see from the pictures, the site is actually starting to look like something. So the concrete infrastructure was done a few months ago. The pavers, though not yet complete, were finished up with the remaining bricks that we had, I want to say yesterday or the day before. The site is starting to look amazing. Update on the memorial bricks. None of those have been installed yet, though we have them. They will be installed after the fact to just fit into how, however the scheme works within those pervious pavers. We do have one beehive remaining on the site, honey beehive. It is doing very well, it was actually just fed a winter feed yesterday by one of our beekeepers for the site. There is a limited supply of Richmond Gardens honey left. If anybody's interested in any of that, feel free to contact me via email at jyater, that's J-Y-E-A-T-E-R, at westmont-il.gov, and see if you can get some of the last remaining supply of that for the year.
Great stocking stuffer.
It is a great stocking, thanks for mentioning that. Also, you can keep up to date with all the goings-on at richmondgardens.org, that's the website, or check it out on Facebook, there's always a lot of updates on that. So yeah, that project is moving, and again, if you haven't been by the site, stop by, it looks like something now, instead of just a bare grab, just bare feel, so it's great to see. Secondly, I was contacted about a month ago by representatives from the Morton Arboretum. This whole area here today was a video scene. A group through the arboretum called the Chicago Regional Trees Initiative, who Westmont is a part of, we participate in a few of their groups, but they're interested in promoting trees within the Chicagoland area for their many benefits, and whether that be planting, preservation, pruning, proper maintenance, everything you can think of with trees, they're trying to address with communities. So they contacted me and asked if they thought our mayor would be interested in being interviewed to talk about the importance of trees and green infrastructure, because Westmont has been doing so many things as a great example to other communities. So I reached out to Mayor Gunther, and he said yes. I thought he'd be a perfect fit, but he agreed to do it. And he was on vacation, but he came back, and ultimately, it was a pick between a handful of other mayors from other communities. Mayor Gunther was selected. It didn't surprise me one bit. He was selected not only for his devilishly good looks, but also for his commitment, as well as all of your commitments to the environment of the community, but above and beyond that, your commitments to the residents of this community. So, there's a lot of benefits that trees bring to the residents of this community, and I won't bore you with all those details. If you, if you're interested, by all means, talk to Ron, because he did a great job today, and he knocked it out of the park, per se, I know he's a park guy, so he knocked it out of the park. That video should be up, hopefully pre-budget, they're looking to get it up early March, I think, so when that comes through, that'll all be shared with everybody in the village, I believe. So, just wanted to say, well done, Mayor, and thank you for doing that. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Are they still selling the bricks?
They are, actually. Richmondgardens.org, you can go on there, and that'll lead you to brick sales as well. So, now that all the bricks are in, memorial bricks should be going in this spring.
Again, that interview was easy due to the staff, work they do, you know, 23 years of a tree city is remarkable, and to have a forestry department led by John is, we're one of the best in the area, so thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, John. Mayor, that's all I have.
Well, then we'll turn to Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. Last but not least, the Administration Finance Committee meeting will be next on January 2nd at 4:30 here in Village Hall. Again, one more comment about the census. Everybody counts, whether you own your own home, whether you rent, it doesn't matter. Every single person that lives in Westmont counts, so please step up, make sure that you either get to the library or check on your computer at home. We'll be all reaching out to make sure everybody's counted, so that's really, really important, and everybody matters, so that's really a big thing. Also, for community events, we do have the Holidays Coat Drive still going on. If you drop off new or gently-used coats, hats, gloves, scarves, socks, number-one thing, and boots at the library or Park District now through January the 4th. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Moving on the agenda, does any board member see any items they want removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'd ask Acting Manager to read the consent agenda.
The consent agenda includes the village board minutes from the previous meeting, finance ordinance number 16 in the amount of $1,667,248.48, purchase order to Community Unit School District 201 in the amount of $89,765.09, or property tax payment consistent with our IGA with them, and a purchase order to Donald E. Morris Architect in the amount of $26,138.51 for November 2019 building reviews and inspections. The total of purchase orders is $115,903.60, which brings the total of purchase orders and finance ordinance to $1,783,152.08, and that concludes the reading of the consent agenda.
Do I have a motion to approve as read?
Motion to approve as read.
Little?
Second. Barry.
Motion made in second. Any comments or questions from anyone? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Motion passes. Moving on to unfinished business, amended planned development agreement for Market Center, or to consider ordinance approving an amended planned development agreement for Market Center development at 63rd and Cass, including recently-approved revisions to the site plan and mix of uses. And I've got, I'll turn to our attorney, Mr. Zemanek.
Thanks. As stated, as a result of the amended site plan and landscaping plan, we decided it was best to amend and restate the planned development agreement with Bradford for the project, so it reflected the current state of approvals, so pretty straightforward amendments. I sent the draft to you, I guess, last night. I got a few comments from their attorney that I just recirculated to you. They were all ministerial changes, except for one change, which was kind of unrelated to what we were doing, but the LA Fitness had to substantially complete construction by March 31st of 2020. They asked to extend that date to June 30th of 2020, and then they likewise wanted an extension of the date for a certificate of occupancy from, I think it was June 30th until September 30th, 2020. And in my email, I noted that since that building's under construction, they're under lease, all signs show that's going to meet those deadlines. I personally didn't see a problem with the extension, but that's up to you. Otherwise, all we're doing is referencing and attaching the plans that this board previously approved.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second. Barry.
Motion made in second to approve. Comments? Questions? Nobody? Roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barrett.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll move on to new business, an increase in available liquor license, or to consider ordinance to increase the number of available Class 23 liquor license by one for Margie's Beef and Euros, 6410 South Cass Avenue. And I got Deputy Liquor Commissioner Mulher.
Good evening, Mayor and Village Board. Margie's Beef and Euros has re-applied for a Class 23 video gaming liquor license at 6410 South Cass Avenue. They have completed the one-year waiting period needed to reapply for this license. They are eligible to apply for and receive this license. This is Margie's first receive this license. This is Margie's first time reapplying for this license. They wish to have video gaming to enhance their customers' evening experience. Margie's has also been, has been established at this location for close to 40 years. With me here tonight is Corey.
Aronovitz.
Aronovitz, yes. He's the attorney, and George's wife, Mrs. Caraholos is here. George is not here himself. I met with him last week, because he's unfortunately back at the restaurant working, and he needed to stay there and work for that. And talking with George again, you have report they are reapplying. They were denied over a year ago, and now are reapplying again. And talking with George last week, his main reason for this is he has customers asking for this. It's a customer need, as well as they are still struggling financially. And he's looking for some help from the village in the aid of the video gaming to work with that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Corey and Mrs. Caraholos. Okay, thanks. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Thank you. Good evening, Corey Aronovitz, A-R-O-N-O-V-I-T-Z, Mr. Mayor, trustees, councilmen, and clerk. Thanks for having us back. We were here about a year ago, where we sought to have approval to allow for video gambling. There's video gambling in and around the neighborhood. They have been a good commercial local partner. They've been established for a long time. They clearly have been impacted by other video gaming options. They have similar food options compared to what they have. They have been already approved and vetted by the Gaming Board, so they have passed suitability. They will uphold integrity. They'll operate in a compliant manner. They've always been good corporate citizens. We may have been a little early last year, because we were transitioning into what the Class 23 liquor license required at the time, especially with regard to having a menu with liquor that was made available. The company has now satisfied that condition, and we are simply asking for approval, so that this tenant, this commercial tenant's been a good community partner, can continue to compete locally with the other businesses that are similar in nature. And so I have the owner here. I don't know if you have a statement that you'd like to make.
No, you said everything.
So we're respectfully requesting an opportunity to be able to compete with other local businesses, again, that are similar in nature. I can answer any questions if you have.
I think, Tom, we always want to know where the location's at. You need a half-wall, and we'd kind of give some additional background information.
Yeah, and speaking with George, we are requiring now a half-wall, no more theater ropes, standing tape on the floor, anything like that. George, I told George yesterday the village is requiring, he goes, "Half-wall, I already got it," in his plans. If you look on the plans, he has the wall delineated or marked, and so he's going to do the half-wall. He's going to be putting curtains behind the machines. He doesn't want to put stuff on the windows when asked about advertising, because he doesn't want to, you know, have that. But on the south wall, he will have curtains. He will be taking away, I believe it was four booths, maximum maybe 12 seats. However, there's still some remaining seating. He has many booths, he has a lot of booths left. He has tables. He has enough seating for his customers. And he did say that, you know, customers have asked for this. This is something he's been trying for and just would like, need some help. Again, his biggest concern was his financial situation.
And I have a question on the hours. Right now, you're closing, not you, Tom, you're closing at 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock. Would you extend those hours?
We could.
Yeah, for gaming?
Right. But the restaurant will be closed after 9:00, so if they want to stay afterwards, they can just sit there.
You still serve food?
There's a requirement that, as long as you're serving alcohol, you have to serve food, because your license as a restaurant.
We could do that.
And also, the machines are, will be turned on and off according to their hours of operation. So if they tell the state they're closing at 9:00, the machines, if I'm not mistaken, will automatically turn off at 9:00.
Right, that's the way it is, yes.
And if I may just add, their terminal operator has significant experience, has never been disciplined. We've seen a lot in the newspapers with regard to various terminal operators. Their operators, Great Lakes, I do some regulatory compliance for them as well. They have about 20 establishments. They have wonderful service, you know, the best, you know, they compete with the newest and the best games. They'll have ample seating. It'll be a nice environment for your customers, your residents, people that are invitees into the business. And they've never had any sort of disciplinary complaints.
I assume that that building's already sprinkled?
I'll defer to the fire chief on that.
Oh, here he comes.
Anticipated your question, Trustee Barry. No, that building is not sprinkled. I was in there last week and spoke to George, and told him more than likely, this is going to trigger sprinklers, not only the half-wall, but where he's putting the booth, or the gaming, I'm sorry, there's no electrical there. So more than likely, electrical's going to have to be ran. I did talk to my Fire Prevention Bureau Director, and more than likely, this will trigger sprinklers. George says to me then, more than likely, he was not going to do it. I told him, unfortunately, about $40,000 to get your, and he's right at the 2,500 square foot level. So...
And he's a restaurant.
And he's a restaurant, correct. So I'm hoping George changed his mind from last week when I was in there till this week. I have not been back in there this week, but more than likely, this will trigger it.
And if that's a contingent upon licensure, some of these additional requirements, we would certainly be seeking, and if it's not done, we would certainly seek a request for a contingent approval, being able to demonstrate that any of these additional compliance aspects were fulfilled in order to actually commence gaming.
I surely think we can't, we can't have a petitioner in here two weeks ago, enforcing them to do it with a new wall. And then a guy comes two weeks later. We, I would assume we have to keep that same...
Correct. Well, state consistency playing field that I would, as the fire chief can grant. You know, I'd like to go 18 months, but if they request the 36 months, it's truly ungranted on the fire chief to approve that timing for him to agree with the MOU and sprinkle his building.
That's an option for us to enter into an agreement, to have it installed within a certain time period.
That's correct.
We would request that.
Really, prior to voting, though, Steve, I would really like to know, you know, I said most likely, really like to know if that's a yes or a no.
For sprinklers?
Yes.
If George tells me for sure it's 2,500 square feet, of course, he's telling me it's 2,480. I have to look at that. I believe it's over 2,500 personally, but I have to certainly get that. If it's 2,500, it's a definite yes. If it's under 2,500, it's a no. Doesn't meet the...
And Tom, you don't have that on your, you don't have the square footage?
No, I do not have the square footage of the overall business area. I mean, no, I just have the floor plan, seating chart. No, I do not have it.
Question for our attorney. John, wouldn't, I mean, even if we do vote on this, they're still subject to building permits and have to...
They're always subject to complying with codes. So if the fired sprinkler system's triggered, they'd have to comply. If the chief wants to enter into an MOU and give them the three years, that's up to the chief unless you, as part of your motion, if this were to be approved, give specific direction on that issue. But normally, this board doesn't hold up, or grant or deny, a video gaming license or other licenses because of code compliance.
And we could also table that, so that those questions were answered also.
You can also table it, postpone it.
A question for the Deputy Liquor Commissioner. So I haven't been following video gaming for a while. I just know that, you know, we were trying to put some limitations in place, and we struggle with that all the time, because people are requesting, people are requesting. Is video gaming, is it actually growing?
Mayor, we talked about this earlier today. I've had people in the past say that Westmont, because of the high amount that were, is being gamed and the amount that's there, you're undervalued, or you have under machines, you need more machines. Of course, this is somebody coming from the gaming industry, not outside it. Our level, our taxable level or our revenues are staying static. They're between $31,000 and $32,000 a month. And it fluctuates in between there. We're not seeing an outrageous amount of gaming, and we're not seeing it drop either. It, I don't know what a saturated level would be. I don't know what, you know...
There's no indication that we're saturated?
No. And I'm sure if you put more and more machines in, some people will go, and some won't. I mean, I, Trustee Barry, I don't have an answer for you. I can't tell you what level. But our revenues and, so the data, the terminal use is staying constant as you look monthly from business to business. Some drop, some move up. It's, you know, the holiday season, some people won't. Holidays, they're back in town, they'll gamble more. You'll see in January, you'll see the revenues drop, because most everybody's now paying for what they bought back in December, so they don't have the money to go out game, you know, not everyone.
I think history, maybe to answer your question, we approved Fremont, and we analyzed, Tom analyzed, the gaming Laura's Place and Fremont, and it's the same, but it's been spread between the two. So there hasn't been an increase, but our consistency has been the same.
Right. Laura's Place is dropping a little bit by month, you know, maybe $200 a month. I'm attributing that. That's probably because now Fremont Grill is, you know, right there and has gaming as well. I don't know. I mean, I'm sure if you put, build it and they will come. If you put the machines there, they will be used.
Clearly, if people are attracted to coming in for new investment, we'd simply ask for this, this body to consider a business that's been here a long time and trying to stay in and compete. It's a rather nice space. They have ample parking. It's well-lit, so it's a secure place. And so more people are attracted to come in and have more growth.
My whole thing is, you know, I view Margie's as a restaurant, and I think that's where the growth could be. Not the video gaming side, but the food side. And I, you know, that's, that's what I wish all of the restaurants would make it on. Like I told Neat two weeks ago, you know, advertise your food, because their food is, in my mind, was second to none. That's where their growth is going to be, not in a few slot machines in the back. And I understand slot machines generate revenue.
Well, if you have other businesses that have similar food, but you have another amenity, that other amenity will detract and allow people to go somewhere else. I think what we're simply asking for is, if you have it within the community, and you have a business that's been here for a long time, that's invested into the community, and they're struggling, and we're seeing that there are people that are using other food choices that have gaming, would this board please consider keeping a good tenant here in the city? And the gaming itself doesn't cause any additional harm. Even if you have some sort of cannibalization, you still, there's not a significant investment from the location side. It's simply upside. And if you spread it a little bit, at least you're raising up another business. One of the other businesses that were mentioned, if their gaming revenue went down slightly, but another one went up because it was new, that helps two businesses, even if it's not, things go up comparatively. So we're simply asking, you know, for this business to have an opportunity. This is, it's been a year since I've been here, and they started the process a year before. And they already have their gaming license from the Gaming Board, so they're...
Mayor.
And in one conversation, if I could, with George, was my concern is, he changes his menu, he says, "I provided the menu of the item there." He goes, "Depending on customer needs, some things get added, some things get taken away." He's constantly valuing and changing. My concern was, though, is are you ever going to plan and just say, "Okay, I'm going to go to gaming and now maybe be a cafe?" And that's not what he wants. He wants to operate his restaurant.
Trustee Addington.
I was probably one of the people that led the charge a year ago to say no, because my opinion was that it was a fast-food restaurant, and we didn't want to do this to fast foods. However, I'm going to refer all of you back to the letter that Manager May wrote regarding the need application to the folks from the business next door at Bishop's. And that reminded me of why we approved this in the first place, which was to help the existing businesses in town that may be struggling a little bit and needed some of the additional revenue. And that, that's what we said back then. And so I'm changing my, I have changed my opinion. I intend to vote for this this time because of that. This is a nice business. Again, I told you a year ago, I was a customer, and still am. And I think that after 40 years, they deserve some consideration. So I'm changing my position on this, and I would ask everybody else to consider the same thing. These are nice people, and we got to give them an opportunity. After 40 years, they deserve our support a little bit.
And I do have to say, fire chiefs are waiting to talk, but for the past year, there hasn't been any code enforcement, hadn't been any issues, and that was the case the previous time. We had some...
And asking the fire department on this... We do see somewhat of the same pattern of how many square footage, and we hear 2,480. You know what I mean? So there's this, there's this pattern of trying to thin ice it all the time. And we had the trucks parked back there that was separate. That was an issue before. And we didn't have liquor before, and even though we had the liquor license. So, you know, my stance is still the same. I didn't like it a year ago, and I still don't feel that this is a, is a real good fit down there. So...
I could just say that if they're required under the ordinance because of their square footage, they'll comply with your ordinance. They've always have. There's never been a, there's been no discipline. There's no incidents. There's no police records. They don't have any issues with loud noises or anything. So if there's an additional code violation to come in, or code requirement, this applicant, my client, will come into compliance and will work with the, with the village. And I don't, I've not been here aside from last year. I don't know if you voted yes for other gaming opportunities here in the village. If you have in the past, we're simply asking for your support for a business that's been here a long time. The legislative intent of the Video Gaming Act was to provide small businesses an opportunity to generate additional income, especially when, you know, gray games were rampant back in the day. So, you know, it's an opportunity for the business to generate additional revenue. It's the opportunity for the community to have additional revenue. And, you know, you don't want to be here a year later where this company just couldn't make it, and you have an empty space on that lot with all those parking spots.
Fire Chief Bradley.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to ask, answer Trustee's question is, it's 2,800 square feet. We just inspected it about a month ago. There were two minor violations. Excuse me, I'm fighting the same cold as Mr. Forsberg. And two minor violations, and George immediately fixed those violations. Inspectors went back out. Again, an exit light that was out, an emergency light, and George was on top of it. So they would have to...
Just to be clear, though, the 2,800?
Yes, sir.
Definitely going to trigger, because there's going to be permits pulled for the electric and the wall.
That is correct.
It's definitely going to trigger the sprinkler system.
100% triggers sprinklers. And again, I can agree and, you know, go into that MOU with the business of 36 months. If George would like to agree to 18 months, I don't know his financial issues, but I would be happy to go with that 36 months as the fire chief.
It just, I think, it ruins some of the argument that we need this for our hardship, but if we get it, we're willing to spend $60,000 on sprinklers. You know, so it kind of is, it's counterproductive, as Bruce said. Just work on promoting the food, and I think you make up that difference.
We're at a competitive disadvantage in just promoting food, because we promote food against competing businesses with similar food that has liquor that also has gaming. So we, we're short in that regard. But the, but the applicant's willing to make additional economic investment into the community, using probably local folks, in order to satisfy a requirement, in order to get up to code, which is an improvement to the space overall, it's an improvement to the safety, meaning if you don't approve gaming, he has no way to figure that he's going to get additional revenue. He probably won't comply, and that's a safety issue. And basically, what he's saying is, look, if you give me a fair opportunity to compete at arm's length with the rest of the businesses that have an opportunity to offer it, we're going to make an additional investment into the community, into the, into the brick and mortar. And that's a safety, you know, that's a safety thing.
And I'll turn to our attorney. If this is approved, can the condition be after so many months, the license, the liquor license 23 would be rescinded? If they do not comply with the sprinkler in 36 months, whatever the fire chief...
So although it's a fire chief MOU, anytime a liquor license is issued, the mayor can impose reasonable special conditions. One of those can be that there'd be a hearing to revoke the liquor license, Class 23, if they fail to comply.
Okay. And I thought we just discussed at a previous meeting, Chief, tell me if I'm wrong, but that we decide, I thought we had decided that 36 was too long, that the 18 was going to be kind of the standard.
It's been consistent with the previous fire chiefs that it was 36. I would like to go 18. If they're in agreeance to that, I know you and I discussed at the last meeting of any new business coming in town, we should get rid of that MOU, which I 100% agree with you.
you. But a longstanding business that's been here.
Four years, yeah.
Yeah, I just feel that, you know, I'd certainly try to push George to sign the 18 months, but if financial hardship is there, I could give that 36.
Okay, thank you.
Can we get some clarity on the food? It sounded like, John, we heard that there may be an idea to just shut the kitchen down and keep the machines open and finger food was given, but I thought we have some things against, I guess I just want some clarity on what type of food maybe to help them.
Yeah, you know, as long as they're serving food, technically they're okay. And I think that's where, to the mayor's point about what can he require as a special condition to prevent them from shutting down and just offering potato chips and holding themselves out as a restaurant. It's got to be prepared food and maybe we can talk about some of those details.
But our 23 liquor license, we, we know that they're not going to use food, right? I mean, so once they get that class 23.
That's the gaming cafes.
That's 20.
But I mean, historically, we know they're not going to, the gamers are not going to buy food. We've determined that because we knew that the class 23s were not moving any food, remember, right? Is that why we created that?
No, I, I.
Different number, I think.
I'm sorry, am I saying the wrong number?
Yeah, I think it was the video gaming cafes that were solely for video gaming, but had to have a liquor license and as our liquor license requirement at the time, they had to serve food. Well, they weren't really, they were, all they were doing is microwaving a pre-made sandwich and saying, we're serving food.
Right.
And that's where the problem was. And that's why the village board in part capped those video gaming cafes and has not allowed and stated they will not allow any more cafes to come into town. But as far as the restaurants, I mean, you've got Uncle Bubbs, you know, they're selling food, they've got their normal menu at all times that they are in operation. I think trustee, near to your point, that can be a requirement that, you know, hey, if you want to have extended hours, great, but continue to have your full restaurant meal, you know, menu available.
And to be clear, my conversation with George was, you're not going to do that because, and he says, no, he, he will continue his current menu. And I said, our concern is, you know, you don't have any plans of them becoming cafe. His answer is very, yes, his wife's, no, that's not his, that's not his, I don't think that's his way either, no.
And I can make the representation.
Can you make sure you speak into the microphone so it gets recorded?
Oh, no, we don't want to take away the food that we have already. We want to keep it.
My client's gaming will be ancillary to its core business, which is food. And so they have the liquor license, I don't know what type of sales they're doing in liquor license.
But with all due respect, you could tell us whatever you want to tell us.
We can make it a contingency.
We'll put it as a issue on the license.
Well, we can make it a contingency, I guess what I'm saying is the client has no problem having that as a contingency, that gaming is ancillary to the core business.
What we normally done, we've done in the past with the wall and I envision we would do this, I worked with the mayor, we add restrictions on the class 23 license, which we will make, you know, you're aware of basically what the mayor wants to put in place. We've done this with other locations as well, on the wall mainly, but not so much on food. But that would be something so before, you would know what the restrictions are before you decided to come and take the license.
I had a question.
Yes.
Can you tell me approximately how many machines you plan to bring in? Are you bringing in three or are you bringing in five? What are your plans?
The, the law allows up to six. At this point, the operator would look at putting into six unless the village hasn't approved from five to six. So whatever the maximum amount of games that are allowed under the village ordinance.
The village allows six and, and we can't regulate.
I wasn't questioning reducing the number. My question was more, do you have the space for that many machines?
Yes, they do.
That was my question.
And it's, and talking to George, it's six with the ATM machine, which is standard at all video gaming locations.
That's fine, as long as I know.
Yeah, I, by viewing it, if you look, it'd be go from the wall, you can, that's why he's taking an extra booth out. There's more than enough room.
Thank you.
And Tom, what would be your recommendation on the wall? Should they build the wall before they start gaming?
Mayor, I believe, and again, George had told me, he said, but his first words was his mouth, yeah, I'm going to build the wall. He intended to put that in there. We're going to require a half wall to designate the area from the gaming to be separated, is what state does too, from the eating area. A half wall, if he wants to go a full wall, that's his choice to do so. I checked with the state earlier today, they can put video cameras, but it does not alleviate their employees from watching to see who goes in there. That's not his intention, but if he so choose to come back and said, I'm going to exceed it and put a half wall up, it's similar like what Zazo's did or with Johnny's putting it in a separate room, that's his option. And just as long as, we are going to require a half wall.
And the, their terminal operator has experience with that type of configuration.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Addington.
Second, Guzzo.
Motion made and second approved. Additional comments? Anybody from the audience? Seeing none, I'd ask for roll call, please. Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
No.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
No.
Trustee Nero. Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we'll be communicating on the specifics of the condition.
You know, be in touch. Thank you very much. Happy holidays.
New business B, amend liquor license class 24 description. Board to consider ordinance increasing the number of taps permitted by a business with a class 24 liquor license. And I think Deputy Liquor Commissioner Mulhern may review for us the class 24.
A class 24 liquor license allows for a craft brew tasting room in a class five liquor license location. Class 24 businesses are restricted to six taps to dispense craft brews as per the description in our liquor license description. A request to increase the number of taps from six to eight has been received. The request is due to several brewing companies asking to have their brew sold, but there are not enough taps currently available to meet their request. Adding two taps will assist in offering specialty brews. With me here is Dylan and it's pretty much straightforward, he can answer any questions the board may have. But basically when they bought their equipment, they bought eight taps, they only have six operating, I did a site check, they only have six operating, but because of the business is doing very well, they have a lot of brew companies now wanting to come in and put their product in there. They have the two extra taps, he asked if they could, we could amend our ordinance description to read from six taps to eight.
And it's not taking any additional space, it's taken now?
No.
It's an eight handle dispenser, so we're just using six per the ordinance. We're just asking to use the other two that we have already on the tap.
And, and it's working.
It's doing well, thank you.
It's doing what you wanted it to do.
Thank you. We actually have gotten some new breweries because of this, too, that wouldn't talk to us before, so we appreciate that.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Addington.
Second, Little.
Motion made and second to approve. Comments? Trustee Barry.
I, I happened to use your sampling room a week or two ago. And really a neat thing, really it's tucked away back in the corner. I appreciate that you came here instead of just tapping those other two. I'm, I'm sure we would have had no way to know that if you would have started using those other ones. But really a, a unique situation you have going there, not a big beer guy, but to have a beer and then go shop, it, it kind of changed, I guess, the liquor store experience. You know, it was more of an experience versus just grabbing something and going because you had that, that beer to finish, so you could kind of educate yourself on, on some of your products and so forth. So I, I can't see where it would be an issue. They were all small little glasses and it seemed like the, the connoisseurs kind of stayed back there where, like myself, I kind of, you know, was more interested in, in what else was going on. So I, I don't have an issue with it and I think overall, this is a really neat concept that we have going on here in Westmont.
And also, since taking the frame, they were not, they weren't required, but they did the fires, they did the water, the sprinkling. They installed that because they're enjoying the permits as well. They installed the sprinklers already, they wanted to do that expense. So we are being consistent when these things come along.
Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, roll call, please. Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
John, he can start immediately, he doesn't have to wait for the text amendment, he can go back and do this tomorrow. Add the extra two taps or does he have to wait?
He's got to wait for the mayor to actually sign the ordinance and, yeah, I'd say tomorrow is probably.
Just curious, we didn't talk about that, but I'm just wondering if there was a waiting period at all.
Because I was going to text my guy right now and tell him to start.
Text him tomorrow.
He can veto it still, so.
Okay. Well, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Happy holidays.
New business C, WBK Consultants' Addendum, 61st Street and Cumner Road Wetland. It's a detention project. Board to consider ordinance authorizing addendum proposal from WBK Consultants for the additional surveying and engineering design services for 61st Street and Cumner Road Wetland Detention Project. Director Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor. WBK has been retained to perform phase two engineering design services for the construction of the stormwater management facility at 61st and Cumner, that they're currently working on. Additional detention volume, water quality features, culvert replacement and sidewalks are also included in that scope. With these sidewalks, that will include, so that'll make 61st Street all the way from Fairview all the way down to Williams, will have sidewalks completely on the north side of the street, which is something you were asking for. DuPage County requires additional, unfortunately, DuPage County requires additional hydraulic miling to perform this task. Additional scope will also include designing the new public sidewalk along the north side of 61st between Williams and Cumner and replacement of the sidewalk along the south side. Staff recommends approving this proposal in the amount of $19,392.
Have a motion to approve?
Motion by Addington.
Second, Nero. Made and second. Comments? Anybody from the audience? Seeing none, roll call, please. Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business D, Daycare's zoning text amendment. Board to consider ordinance approving zoning ordinance text amendments regarding daycare homes and daycare centers. Director Sylvester.
Mr. Mayor and trustees, this is really just a minor cleanup of the zoning ordinance. As we're using the zoning ordinance every day and week, we're finding things that are missing or some inconsistencies. And when we find them, we're trying to propose text amendments to fill in any missing gaps. The zoning ordinance was silent about daycare homes and daycare centers, so we wrote some regulations. Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed them and liked them. Basically daycare homes would be permitted in single-family residential districts. Daycare centers, more of a commercial business, would be allowed in, in B and C districts. The important thing is any of those would need to go through.
And M and OR and OR1.
Thank you for reminding me.
For this daycare centers.
That's right. So the commercial types of daycare centers would also be allowed in the OR and the O district and the M districts as well. But any of these businesses would need to get state licenses and that's really where the scrutiny would be for all the safety and, and health issues that would need to be satisfied in order for them to get the state childcare license.
All right, motion approved, addendum.
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Little.
Motion made and second. Comments? Trustee Addington.
It has nothing to do with this, I have no problem, but is a day, would a daycare also be considered a school?
No, that's different.
We, we have a different, I was asking the question because of what we just recently passed with regard to a location to, for retail sales of marijuana.
Cannabis.
So that would, so this would not affect any of those locations that at the present time have, the few that we did designate where it could happen.
Right.
Okay.
Does this requirement specify for a resident how many children? I mean, if they have two, do.
It's regulated by the state and the state sets a limit.
Okay. But I mean, if they only have two children, then they're actually a daycare according to our ordinance?
It's considered to be a daycare home.
Home, yeah.
And the number of children that can be served in a daycare home is smaller than in a commercial daycare center.
I think if, there's an exception in the rules and I think if it's only one or two children that are coming over, you're not considered a daycare home.
Yeah.
It has to be licensed, sort of.
Can you email us the difference between a daycare home and a daycare so that we have that understanding?
I mean, a daycare center and a daycare home.
Daycare center and a daycare home.
So there is a definition for each in your text amendment ordinance?
It's in there, okay.
It's in there and Nalini Johnson did some research, looked at the state regulations, looked at how surrounding communities define those and.
But I, I can read it, John. I just, I, I want to know that so that we have that understanding. And the other, the other question I had is, and it's, it's about daycare homes popping up all over the place or in neighborhoods or whatever. And a question I had months ago or a month ago or so was about, is there any insurance required with a daycare home? Because if you're bringing kids into that home, there's added risk, I don't care who it is or what it is or how well it's managed. And, you know, I watched planning and zoning where the lady said, well, we'll have two staff people watching three or four children, so nobody's left unattended. But I've been at schools my whole life and there's always an opportunity for someone to be unattended. So if there's no insurance requirement for a daycare home, that's problematic to me. You know, of course, as a client, you'd have to weigh that on yourself. I just don't know that.
So I looked at the regulations to try and find them and, and there's two sets of regulations. There's the, the state statute that regulates daycare homes and has all the requirements. And then there's administrative rules and regulations, which are pages and pages and pages. And in the state statute itself, I saw no reference whatsoever to insurance requirements. And I just hadn't made it through all of the administrative rules and regulations, to answer your question. I know it's outstanding. Either way, the village, this is an exclusive licensing function of the state. So it's a question we talked about at a staff level, whether the village can impose additional requirements. And, you know, oftentimes we talk about statutes, well, as long as we're at least as restrictive as the state, we, we actually can be more restrictive and impose additional requirements. But courts have ruled that where the state has taken over an exclusive licensing function, the village can't step in and start imposing additional requirements, inspections, et cetera. So I don't know the answer to your question, I'll get that question answered.
Is it, is it worth answering? Because I guess I'm looking for, I'm looking for, is there, you know, village authority when it comes to daycare homes is really my ultimate question.
I, I believe the state statute is very strict. Like there's a lot of, you know, electrical things that have to be changed, safety, I know safety is a, is a big part of it and I would hope that this would give us the.
Planning and zoning, what I believe planning and zoning was saying at that meeting is the public health lady comes in and she walks around and takes a look and everything's A-OK. Well, it's not that way.
Fire marshal has to do an inspection once a year and they have to maintain records of that inspection. Both the fire marshal would maintain it, but so does the daycare home provider.
And we're not, our fire department has access to that?
I'm sure they could absolutely get it from a state fire marshal.
Okay.
I think still what's outstanding that we're going to work through is to what extent can we require sprinklers or other fires, life safety type issues if the state doesn't, or regardless of what the state regulations are, can we enforce minimum life safety requirements?
Right. And that's what I, I feel much better if our fire chief has a handle on it, especially if it's at my neighbor's house. if it's at my neighbor's house.
That being said, it, in my opinion, doesn't impact of what's on the table tonight, which is simply...
Yeah, sorry.
No, no, they're all great questions.
Good question, no.
Yeah, it's something we talked about at the staff level, but we wanted to get this in front of you, just to provide some helpful guidance to staff when someone comes in and says, "Hey, I want to open a daycare center, where can I do it?"
So, so I think about six years ago, when Chief Mulhern was, was the police chief, we had a situation where apartment building here at Fifty-fifth and Cass was running a daycare out of there. Would this now give us, and I think there was almost nothing we could do at that time, would this give us the teeth to then get something like that closed down?
Well, the proposal would not allow a daycare home in an apartment, so I believe if someone were operating one, we could say they're doing that clearly in violation of the rules.
Right. If the state tells us otherwise for some reason, fine, but I don't, I didn't see anything that trumps local zoning controls. Obviously, you have to allow this and we allow it reasonably in single-family residence districts, but because of the potential adverse impacts on surrounding tenants and or condo owners, we said it's not appropriate in multifamily buildings.
Other comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business E, amendments to building permit fees. Board to consider ordinance approving amendments to chapter eighteen, article eight, section eighteen dash four eighty-seven of the Westmont Code of Ordinances regarding building permit fees. Director Sylvester.
So, very briefly, we're also continuously trying to improve and update our fee schedules and making it clear what fees we charge and make sure that they're reasonable. The building commissioner, Jason Vitell, was explaining to me that a lot of our staff time is spent chasing down people who had begun the process to apply for permits. We had spent some time and some monies reviewing plans and then they disappear or drop the permit and we try to chase them down to get the seventy-five dollars. So what we're proposing is to flip that around and just say that that money is due upfront. It's not an increase, it doesn't add any additional costs, it just says, provide that upfront so that if you do drop your application or disappear, we don't spend a lot of time trying to chase you down. Additionally, some of the changes that we're proposing are to have a uniform one-hundred-dollar fee for both commercial and residential, so it's clear and easy and everyone would know that it's a straight one-hundred-dollar fee. That is a small increase for residential, but it is a decrease for commercial, so I just want people to be aware of that.
That's for flat fee projects.
For flat fee projects. Thank you. It should be noted also that currently, as it was explained to me, we have sort of a remnant fee specifically for projects that have any electrical or plumbing components. We're proposing to eliminate that, so for many residential projects where there might be a small increase for that one-hundred-dollar flat fee that I just mentioned, they would no longer be required to pay that seventy-five-dollar fee for an electrical component or a seventy-five-dollar fee for a plumbing component. So that's a decrease in fees. And that's it, I think. Oh, and then having a one-hundred-dollar flat fee for the counter permits.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Barry.
Second.
Addington.
Motion made and second to approve. Additional comments? Questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on, miscellaneous. Trustee Addington.
This continuation of the question I asked on that one ordinance.
Which one?
The one on daycare centers. And the retail sale of marijuana. What is, I guess, my question is, what do we consider a daycare center? I'm not worried about the homes because that's in a residential area, but is like a creme de la creme, is that considered a daycare center or kinder care?
Yeah.
Those are, okay. So, I guess then I'm coming back to, would you want, say, next to kinder care than the retail sales? Should there, should we have some separation there that might, might eliminate some of the areas that are presently approved under the zoning code we passed? It's just, it popped in my head as we were talking about it and I'm just wondering if it's something that we should maybe do a little bit of research on, just to say, I don't want it next to a daycare center.
I will say this, one, you have absolute zoning control when it comes to dispensaries or other adult-use cannabis facilities, so you can impose a separation requirement from daycares or whatever else you think's reasonable. However, because these are processes, special use permits, you also have the ability to look at these on a case-by-case basis, determine what the surrounding businesses are and determining, determine whether it's appropriate at that location. So you kind of have some built-in protections without over-regulating this.
We built in some protections, so many feet from school, from the park, so this could also apply for a special use.
We could go to like twenty-five miles.
Yeah.
Well, again, the...
Bruce, yeah, there you go.
It's a rhetorical question at this point because we, we still don't know what they're doing at the state level after they get rid of the permitted licenses that apparently are all going to existing medical marijuana facilities. So, there's time for us to keep playing with this before there's going to be anything happening anyway. It was just a question because it's something I hadn't considered before, but again, the restriction is, is where I think we want to look at it. I like what we did as far as the restrictions that are there, but this might be an additional one for us to look at down the road. That's the only reason I brought it up.
Any other miscellaneous items? Anybody from the staff, audience?
Mr. Mayor, I forgot something on my report and along the line of condolences, we lost a longstanding businessman last week, Floyd Foster from Foster's Truck Safety Lane on Van Industrial, passed away. He was there, I believe, over forty years. He originally started out as a Rotts truck mechanic at Rotts disposal and then built that business and built the safety lane, is what he had done in his, in his older years. I think most of us, I know the village, every vehicle that around here that needs